Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Monday, June 12th, meeting of the Campbell County School Board. And our very special, this is probably their most special meeting of the year where we can recognize our senior valedictorians and salutatorians from the area high schools. So, welcome, everyone. It's good to see so many smiling faces here tonight. So, at this time, I'd like to start off the meeting with a pledge of allegiance and a moment of solace for everybody present.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Constitution for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, Dr. Johnson, Chairman Epperson, and members of the board. It is a great honor to be able to present our valedictorians and salutatorians from each of our schools this evening. Prior to those presentations, I did want to share a little bit about the accomplishments of the class of 2023. We had 518 graduates, and so they graduated last weekend, not this one, but the previous one before. And this is a very impressive number because this number is actually higher than where we were in 2019. Our seniors, our graduates, have earned over $5 million in scholarships that will be awarded over four years. Many of these scholarships are incredibly prestigious and some first time ever being awarded to Campbell County graduates. Additionally, I wanted to share just very briefly what some of the plans are of our graduates. So, we have approximately 40% of our seniors will be attending a four-year college or university. We also have about 7% will be pursuing a trade or technical school degree. We also have 17% going to community college, and we have 30% who will be joining the workforce. Many of you saw those students at signing day as they signed with their employers. And then we have 3% go into the military and 4% who are taking a gap year prior to pursuing their next endeavors. So, we are very proud of the work that this class has done. To start with, we will have Alta Vista Combined School, and tonight, Mr. Sanders will be presenting both the valedictorian and salutatorian from Alta Vista Combined. So, I will turn it over to him.
Good evening, Dr. Johnson, and school board members. Graham Dalton, you and your family. We'll go with the salutatorian first. This is Graham Dalton with Mom and Dad Jeff and Elaine Dalton at 6337 Telegraph Road. And as you guys can tell, they all decided to match today for the special occasion. Graham has been on our cross-country, outdoor track, and marching band. He's our salutatorian and won the Hope Wood Scholarship, and he plans next year to attend the University of Lynchburg. So, congratulations to Graham. And then Haley Ann Woodruff.
Haley Ann's with her mom, Shelley Barnhart. They live at 2210 Beverly Heights, Alta Vista, Virginia. Haley Ann is on her marching band, pep band, track, cross-country, swim team, National Honor Society, National Junior Honor Society, Spanish Honor Society, Student Council Association, and Spanish Club. She is also, has made principals lists all throughout her high school career and won the President's Education Awards Program, the Award for Academic Excellence. She's also won the Best Musician Award. And also, I will say, Haley Ann did not expect this, but she has, since graduation, has been actually painting a mural at the entrance of her school. So, she's been doing work for, out of love of her heart. Next year, she plans to attend CVCC for her semester to finish her associate's degree and transfer to Brigham Young University to receive her bachelor's degree in exercise physiology that she plans to transfer to a doctor of physical therapy program. And next up will be Ms. White at Brookville High School.
Good evening, Dr. Johnson, Chairman, Mr. Epperson, and members of the school board. As Principal of Brookville High School, I am pleased to announce our valedictorian and salutatorian. Cecilia is the daughter of Keith and Cheryl Kincaid. She resides at 125 North Lake Drive, Lynchburg, Virginia. Cecilia attended and was ambassador at Central Virginia Governor's School. She placed in the Regional Science Fair through the Central Virginia Governor's School in 11th grade. She was a member of the National Honor Society for two years and sang with her chorus in her freshman year. Cecilia was also a part of the leadership class, which presented, or excuse me, planned all kinds of school activities. She worked at Mr. Goody's and volunteered with her church almost every week where she also played the piano. Cecilia plans to attend Northeastern University, majoring in behavioral neuroscience. Our valedictorian, Ariel Wong, could not be here tonight. Ariel is the daughter of Eric and Lana Wong. She resides at 88 Sprouse Lane, Lynchburg, Virginia. Ariel was a member of the Key Club for three years and served as president for two years. She was recognized as a distinguished club president at the district level two years in a row. Ariel helped grow our Key Club to over 60 active members. She served as vice president for the SCA for one year, girls' soccer for two years, was a member of the National Honor Society for two years, and Spanish and political science clubs for one year. Ariel was named Ms. Brookville her senior year. She attended the Central Virginia Governor's School for two years, where she was selected to serve as program ambassador her senior year. During her junior year, Ariel completed a year-long research project testing the effects of microplastic size on transportation by invertebrate. She went on to compete in the Regional Science Fair, where she placed second in the environmental category. Ariel was recognized as a distinguished woman in geoscience and later went on to compete in the state-level science fair. She also received an honorable mention at the Virginia Junior Symposium. Ariel was named UVA Jefferson Valentus Scholar finalist and was named U.S. Presidential Scholar. Ariel is first in her family, this is the cool part, first in her family to attend all, it's cool, but this is really cool. She was first to attend high school in her family, and she will be the first to attend college. Ariel will be attending University of Virginia to study biochemistry or neuroscience on the pre-medical track to become a physician. Next up is Brantley Shields with Rustburg.
Good evening, Dr. Johnson, school board members. Our salutatorian for tonight, Mason Reynolds, could not be here tonight, but he is the son of Mr. Philip Reynolds and Ms. Janet Reynolds. He resides at 3041 Colonial Highway, Rustburg, Virginia. Mason participated in robotics and STEM, and he plans on attending the University of Virginia in the fall to study engineering. And then Matthew Wright, you want to come on up? Matthew Wright is the son of Mr. Frank Wright and Ms. Kristen Wright. He resides at 1277 Tobacco Lane, Brookneal, Virginia. He was a member of the National Honor Society, president of SCA, and the senior class, was a member of the swim team and the soccer team. Matthew was recognized as a National Merit Scholar finalist and will receive over $400,000 in scholarships from the Naval Academy. Matthew will attend the United States Naval Academy in the fall to study engineering and physics. Great job, Matthew. Next up, we have Ms. Hanson.
Good evening, Dr. Johnson and board members. I'd like to call Isaiah Lowery and his family up. And before I introduce Isaiah, both my salutatorian and valedictorians, parents or teachers at William Campbell, so it's extra special for us tonight. Dad is one of our teachers here. So, first, we have our salutatorian, Mr. Isaiah James Lowery. Isaiah is the son of Eric and Renee Lowery of 1696 Hack Creek Road, Brookneal. While at William Campbell, Isaiah was active in golf for all four years, competed at the state golf tournament three of those four years. He also was a member of the Beta Club and participated in varsity track for three years. Isaiah received the J.P. Stevens Award for Excellence in Math, as well as the Dominion Award for Academic Excellence. As an early college student, Isaiah received his associate degree from Central Virginia Community College last month. He also earned his Noctis certification in mechanical engineering. Isaiah plans to attend Old Dominion University to pursue a degree in computer science. Again, I proudly present to you William Campbell's salutatorian, Mr. Isaiah Lowery. And next, if I could have Ethan and his family.
Ethan is the son of Michael and Sandra Kerr of 2088 Molly's Creek Road, Gladys. Ethan actively participated also in golf throughout his four years at William Campbell and competed in the state golf tournament each year. He also was a member of the Beta Club and participated in varsity track one year. Ethan represented William Campbell at Virginia Boy State in 2022. He was also, he also received the Sterling Meadows Scholarship and a Southside Electric Scholarship. In addition, Ethan was the recipient of the J.P. Stevens Award for Excellence in History. As an early college student, Ethan also received his associate's degree from Central Virginia Community College last month. He too has earned his Noctis certification in mechanical engineering. Ethan plans to attend Liberty University to pursue a degree in exercise science. I proudly present to you William Campbell valedictorian, Mr. Ethan Kerr.
If we could, I would have everybody, all the valedictorians and salutatorians that are present, come up, would like to get a picture. If we could, I would have everybody, all the valedictorians and salutatorians that are present, come up, would like to get a picture. If we could, I would have everybody, all the valedictorians and salutatorians that are present, come up, would like to get a picture. If we could, I would have everybody, all the valedictorians and salutatorians that are present, come up, would like to get a picture. If we could, I would have everybody, all the valedictorians and salutatorians that are present, come up, would like to get a picture. If we could, I would have everybody, all the valedictorians and salutatorians that are present, come up, would like to get a picture. Thank you all. Thank you all, and for all those that want to stay and enjoy our meeting, you're welcome too, but otherwise, anyone who wants to leave, now would be a good time to head out. Thank you all, congratulations again.
Congratulations.
Next item up is Mr. Hardy.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Tonight, I'm here to recognize some very special people and a very special partnership that we have. I'd like to call forward Cody Cyrus and Cody Hurd from CNC Piping and Fabrication. If you have not had the good fortune to meet these folks, this Cody Hurd and Cody Cyrus, they own CNC Piping and Fabrication, which is located in Alta Vista, Virginia, okay? They have a deep love of welding and welding careers, and we have had a longstanding partnership with them. And they have demonstrated what I would call visionary leadership in advanced welding career pathways and in CTE programs within Campbell County Schools, Central Virginia Community College, and the Virginia Technical Institute. They have met with our high school instructors to offer professional development and advice on the type of equipment that we should use in our programs that integrate welding, as well as visited classrooms to perform welds and do demonstrations with and in front of our students. They've led the development of a very special event called Central Virginia Welding Wars. You may have heard of that. It is an event and competition that has been held at CVCC each year. And in addition, Cody Hurd has been a welding instructor at both CVCC and VTI in Alta Vista. So, in addition to running a company and having children in our school system and being parents, they stay quite active in our community and in our schools in some very unique ways. So, the Central Virginia Welding Wars was really the vision of Cody and Cody. Together with our school system and other local schools that participate, as well as the support of local business and industry, the Lynchburg Regional Business Alliance, and CVCC and VTI, along with the Workforce Board and Career Works, their vision has become a reality. To tell that story, I'm not going to do it justice tonight, but quite frankly, in 2017, they came here to see me and said, "We want to see if we can generate enough interest for a welding event." And so, we worked together tirelessly that year to put it together, get the right stakeholders involved, and we've done that and just finished up our fifth annual event. They deserve full credit for their vision and then for helping it become a reality. So, I'm just going to share a few pictures from the event with you this year. Hopefully, you can see, this is in the welding lab at CVCC. I know that Dr. Johnson and Dr. Stanley had the chance to visit the event. They've done so each and every year. Our students, there are three divisions. There is a high school level division, there is a collegiate division, and a professional division. So, at this event, it's a very busy day, okay? Cody is usually leading everything in the lab, and Cody is helping lead all the registration and everything else that happens behind the scenes so the action can really happen with everyone who competes. It is, it is a great program that has been supported by our top manufacturers, does not cost our students a single dollar to participate in. All of it is really funded through the support of local business and industry. So, it's proven to be an excellent outlet. Here are some other pictures of our students, some of the welds that they have done. They take quite a bit of pride in their work, okay? There is a section of the event where our local companies really have a career fair style event going on also. So, when students and participants are not welding, they're being recruited and being able to find out about what other local companies have to offer. And on the right, you'll see, that is one of our students in our manufacturing technology program. As we started this event, they said, "Well, you know, we need some trophies." And I said, "Well, I think we can help with that." With our manufacturing technology program, they make all of the trophies. So, you'll see to his right what looks like the symbol of a welding helmet. It is, it's actually rolled steel where they cut out the design on a plasma cutter and everything like that. So, Harland was a student responsible for making all of the awards at this event. And one of the things that Cody and Cody do to really help make this event special for those that place in it is they work very hard, along with the Regional Business Alliance, to get donations. So, we have a lot of donations, some really cool, you know, things for people to walk away with, and even our professionals, it ends up being a 50/50 cash pot. So, while each business can enter a couple of contestants for $100 each, the winner has the pride of saying that they're the best professional welder in the area, and they walk away with some serious cash at the end of it, too. Okay? So, it's supported at every level. We also have a Day in the Life of the Welder Panel that students get to listen to and talk to some of these professional welders, where when they are not competing, they understand the perspective of what the profession really entails. So, here's a few of this year's winners. We did have a few of our students in Campbell County Schools place. So, Noah Tomlin from Rustburg placed second in the Level 1 high school competition, and Lucas Young placed second in the Level 2 competition for high school. He had placed last year at Level 1 as a junior coming from our manufacturing technology program here at the Tech Center. So, both are fine young men and have a passion for welding. As you know, the superintendent's regions across the state, there are eight of them, and the state is really broken up into those regions when the Virginia Department of Education looks at things. Well, we nominated CNC Piping and Fabrication for a Business and Industry Partnership Award this year, and they were selected as the top business and industry partnership in all of Region 5. So, that spans from here to Rockingham County. So, that is not a small area. That's why I put that map up, just to remind everyone that that's not just our region. When we talk about the Lynchburg region, we talk about the entire region going all the way to Harrisonburg, so, you know, and beyond Harrisonburg. So, that's quite an honor from the Virginia Department of Education, and I was able to attend a ceremony where they were honored last Thursday. So, we went together to Richmond where they were recognized, and I would like to formally recognize them in front of all of you with their award from the Virginia Department of Education for the top business and industry partnership in Region 5. So, we just, we appreciate Cody Cyrus, Cody Hurd, and the entire team at CNC Piping and Fabrication, all that you've done, your ongoing support and your partnership. We know it will not end and look forward to what the future has to hold with us working together. Thank you for being dedicated to our students.
I got a question to ask you. When somebody calls and says, "I want to speak to Cody," how do y'all solve that problem? Cody boy, Cody girl, or I A O Y?
All right. Well, I have one other presentation tonight, Mr. Chairman, and that is a special scholarship that we'd like to recognize a student for. So, at this time, I'd like to call Ryan Hart up. All right, so I'm going to brag on Ryan here. Ryan is the recipient of the 2023 RRMM Superintendent Scholarship, and he attends Alta Vista High School. Ryan has just recently graduated, and he was also a student in our electrical program here at the Technical Center over the course of the last two years. During those two years, Ryan earned his NCCR Core Certification, as well as his NCCR Electrical Level 1 Certification. And this year, we actually offered OSHA 10 certifications to students as well, and he earned his OSHA 10 card in addition to those other certifications. Ryan's done all that. He's maintained a 3.8 GPA at Alta Vista High School as a member of this year's graduating class, where he was also on the basketball team and served as the team's captain and really was selected to the all-regional team as well. In addition, Ryan has won two state championships in indoor track and field and participated in outdoor track at Alta Vista High School as well. So, he is, he's been a member of the Fellowship of Christian Athletes. He's a very active member of New Beginnings Church in Alta Vista, and he was recognized most recently at our CTE Signing Day for being a graduate who wanted to go right into the workforce. So, that's Ryan's plan, and he was hired by Campbell Heating and Cooling. So, he has begun work already, okay? Right, literally, you know, started right after graduation and is on the job for Campbell Heating and Cooling. He's also planning on being enrolled at the Virginia Technical Institute. Well, he will continue to earn certifications in NCCR and continue working to earn his journeyman's license in the future. So, he is a prime example of a student who is learning and earning, okay? And we are so proud of him and just wanted to say congratulations to Ryan on this scholarship. It's a great opportunity, and we're so proud of you and what you're going to do with your future.
At this time, I'd ask Kenny Word if you'd come up. Thank you.
So, I left Baltimore County Schools at 1:00, and I got here at 6:28. Ryan and his mom gave me a tissue so that I could erase this. Congratulations, man. But again, Kenny Word with RMM Market Tech, I'm a business development manager. Every year, RMM recognizes the Regional Superintendent of the Year for, you know, not only for what they do for the students in their respective districts, but also as a way for us to give back to the community. So, without further ado, the Region 5 Superintendent of the Year is not only a Wahoo like myself, but he's the Region 5 Superintendent of the Year, Dr. Robert Johnson.
Can we take a photo? Sure. I will, yes, sir. Be happy to.
Oh, one other thing. So, could we convince him to unretire because next year...
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Oh, one other thing. So could we convince him to unretire because next year, we're going to double or quadruple this amount? Give him a reason to come back.
Thank you, Kenny. Appreciate you and our.
Thanks a lot. Thanks for what you do.
Go Hoosiers.
Go Hoos.
Hey, Ryan, congratulations to you, buddy.
Congratulations.
What are you doing in your spare time? Sounds like you're a busy guy. Good job. Okay. What a way to start the meeting. You can't beat that. Okay, next item up is our board will hear matters from the floor. At this time, the board will hear matters from the floor. Each speaker will have three minutes to speak. Please be respectful of the three-minute time limit. Prior to speaking, please state your name and address. Comments must be directed to the board, not to the staff, to the audience, or the media. Thank you. And our first speaker will be Ms. Mendez, Jackie Mendez.
Well, good evening. I want to congratulate all the valedictorians and salutatorians. Since I work in higher ed, we always look at all those achievements. So my name is Jackie Mendez. I'm a resident in Evington, Virginia, and a member of Campbell County. In 2022, this board passed a resolution to ban decisive concepts, CRT, and not utilize the 1619 project materials to teach all children in Campbell County. One year later, this board has not incorporated this resolution into policy, and residents want to know why. A resolution is just a piece of paper sitting in a file. According to Virginia law titled 22.1, Section 7, 8, Bylaws and Regulations, a school board may adopt bylaws and regulations not inconsistent with state statutes and regulations of the Board of Education, for its own government, for the management of its official business, and for the supervision of schools, including but not limited to the proper discipline of students, including their conduct going to and returning from school. Also, Virginia law titled 22.1, Section 79, Powers and Duties. A school board shall see that school laws are properly explained and enforced and observed and secure by visitation or otherwise, as full information as possible about the conduct of the public schools in the school division, and take care that they are conducted according to law and with the utmost efficiency. This community is seeking action behind items voted on by this board. A reminder of what critical race theory and DEI is doing to our nation. The Rushing Brook Children's Choir was abruptly interrupted while singing our national anthem at the U.S. Capitol on May 26. The policies being pushed by the Washington administration have forced the unwilling Capitol Police to stop the choir from singing the national anthem. Such singing was referred to as violent protest and subject to immediate removal. That's where we find ourselves these days, folks. We were informed through a FOIA request that Campbell County School personnel are not informed of this resolution nor asked to sign off. And again, we ask why. In this community, we're looking to eliminate divisive concepts as well as create policy that is enforced and administered to all employees of the district. So we do not want window dressing to appease the community because that's clearly what was done, and so we ask you to please do your job. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mendez. Next, Crystal Coleman?
She's not here.
And Doug Behringer?
I'm there.
Okay. That'll conclude our matters from the floor. Thank you. Okay. Next item up would be the approval of the May 8, 2023 Meeting Minutes.
Mr. Chairman, move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Brandt and a second by Mr. Maddox. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Payment of the bills.
You have other minutes to approve, Mr. Chairman. It's June 7.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll move for approval.
Sorry, I missed that. Okay, June 7.
Move for approval there also.
Second.
Okay, we have again, for the June 7 Meeting Minutes, my apologies, we have a motion by Mr. Brandt and a second by Mr. Maddox. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Payment of the bills.
Mr. Chairman, I reviewed the bills and moved to approve payment.
Second.
We have a motion by Dr. Miller and a second by Ms. Parker. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Other action items, acceptance of donations. Ms. McClanahan.
Tonight, you have six donations listed in advance of the meeting on board docs. Unless you have any questions, I ask that you approve them as presented.
So moved, second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Phillips and a second by Mr. Jones. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Consideration of requests for supplemental transfer of appropriations. Ms. McClanahan.
Tonight, you have seven appropriations listed for approval. Unless you have any questions, I ask that you approve them.
Motion.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Maddox and a second by Dr. Miller. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item up, consideration of the 2022-23 Year End Resolution. Dr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is your, the annual resolution that we adopt in June as we close out this fiscal year, that there could be at times a deficit in some categories, and this resolution gives the superintendent and the CFO authorization to adjust appropriations within category to cover those deficits.
Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Dr. Miller and a second by Mr. Jones. Is there any further discussion regarding the resolution? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Dr. Johnson, once again.
Yep. So, Mr. Chairman, board members, tonight you're being asked to approve the Title I, Part A, Title II, Part A, Title III, Part A, and Title IV, Part A, federal grants that those were posted for you to review, and this is something we have to do annually. As you recall, the fiscal year, the federal fiscal year is a different fiscal year than the state, so those will go into effect in October 1.
So a quick question, that's approval of the applications.
That is correct.
Right, okay.
That is correct.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Phillips and a second by Ms. Parker. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Personnel report, Ms. Hunley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. You have in front of you a rather lengthy personnel report. Unless you have any questions, I'd ask that you approve it as written.
Mr. Chairman, if there's no questions, I'll move for approval.
I got a question.
Yes.
I always do.
I know. I was looking right at you.
I'll second that. Are we fully staffed?
No. So we actually had a few more hires today that aren't going to be on this report, so we are under 20 teaching vacancies right now. So we're moving along, doing a good job, yes.
Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
Okay, any other questions? We have a motion by Mr. Brandt and a second by Ms. Maddox. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, thank you, Ms. Hunley.
You're welcome. Can I also really quickly, I wanted to introduce Rollin Adam. He joined us this evening. He's going to be the new Assistant Principal at Brookville High School. I know Mrs. White, and we are very excited to have him join us. He's been an Assistant Principal in Prince Edward County, so he's going to come our way and be a Brookville beef. Excited to have him. Thanks for coming tonight.
Welcome.
And also to let you know, I spoke to Dr. Rinella today. He still has vacancies to fill, obviously. He's looking for at least 12 full-time positions. We are having a job fair on Thursday at Rustberg Middle School, so we added a second job fair into the one that we additionally have in February to try to attract some bus drivers. So that's going to be this Thursday. And nutrition. It's school nutrition, yes, and transportation. So hopefully, we get some people that come to that.
Great. Good luck.
Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Sisk.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Tonight, I have three policies for a first reading. I ask that you take a look at those. If you have any questions, give me a call.
Mr. Sisk, I have a question. And I apologize for not calling you ahead of time, so I don't mean to blindside you. I have a little concern on our electronic device usage, and there's a list of everything that's not supposed to be on there.
Yes, sir.
And I would like to address some type of language about some of these new AI Chat G P three-type thing.
Yes, sir.
That it's our policy that we're addressing that, and that, and there may be times where it's appropriate, but I would like some thought put into that as far as addressing new AI concerns with our electronic devices.
Absolutely. I'll talk to Mark and Clay and we'll talk it through.
That might be part of this or even a standalone policy.
Sure.
In regards to AI, but we'll do some research and get back to you. This is the first reading.
Sure, it is, and that's why I brought it up. And just on one other note, there's on, I don't like to be picky, but J H C H, there's a grammar issue, and I'm sure you'll catch it when you review that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sisk. Okay, at this time, I will entertain a motion of ratifying the superintendent's contract, Clay Stanley, Dr. Stanley, with the Campbell County School Board. Think you all have the contract, had the contract now?
He's in approval. I'll move for approval.
Got a motion by Mr. Brandt.
Second.
Second by Mr. Jones. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Dr. Stanley was unable to join us tonight, but he'll be back next month. Okay. Next item up, report of the superintendent, Dr. Johnson.
Just a couple of things quickly. Wanted to congratulate all the high schools for a job well done this year at graduation. And, you know, it's really nice to go out and hear all the good things that are going on and watching the accomplishments of a lot of these kids, and so I want to say congratulations on that. And then with Cody and Cody, we appreciate your partnership, and, you know, I've been impressed every year I've been over at the Welding Wars, and it's been good. And that's a good example of the type of business partnerships that make our CTE program successful. And, Mr. Hardy, if I'm not mistaken, this might be the second, I know it's the second, if not the third time that we've had a partnership win in Region Five. Fifth time?
Yes, sir.
So I congratulate Mr. Hardy and the work that he does to meet our vision, to prepare all of our kids for whatever it is that we, you know, they choose to do. So the old adage that, you know, all of these kids, we're always preaching going to four-year colleges and all that, it's not happening in Campbell. We're preparing kids for the workforce, and I'm proud of that, and I appreciate that business partnership, as well as many of the others that we have. That's all I have.
We absolutely appreciate those partnerships because we couldn't do it without you, so thank you very much. Okay. Next item up, matters from the board. And because I'm chair, I'm going to switch it up a little bit tonight, and I'm going to start lead off tonight, and then we'll pass along. It is my privilege and honor as chairman of the Campbell County School Board to present you, Dr. Johnson, with a plaque of gratitude. On behalf of the entire school board, we'd like to thank you for the compassion, guidance, and leadership you have provided Campbell County Public Schools over the past 34 years. Campbell County Public Education is far better today as a result of your commitment to education, to the kids in Campbell County, and to the community as a whole. As the superintendent of Campbell County Public Schools the past 14 years, your exemplary leadership has enabled us to weather through some challenging times, such as school closing, economic hardships, layoffs, and most recently, the challenges associated with the pandemic. And at this time, I'll insert a quote by Booker T. Washington. "Success is to be measured not so much by the position that one has reached in life as by the obstacles he has overcome while trying to succeed." Dr. Johnson, consider your tenure a success. There have also been many highlights exemplified by the fact that Campbell County is one of the most respected school divisions in Virginia. The most important is that administration's focus under your leadership on graduating to many students to become productive, responsible, ethical, creative, and compassionate members of society, living up to the mission to provide a world-class education that enables every student to choose and pursue any post-K endeavor. We sincerely appreciate the tireless work, commitment, and leadership you have provided. I think we all can agree, you have been a perfect fit as our superintendent of Campbell County Public Schools. Thank you for everything, and best of luck to you and whatever the future holds. For now, enjoy your retirement." And I've got a plaque here that I'd like to read. "In honor of Bobby Johnson, in sincere gratitude for the compassion, guidance, and outstanding leadership you provided over the last 34 years, may your new beginnings be filled with joyful memories of your time spent contributing to the success of Campbell County Public Schools and the countless students you have impacted over the years. Congratulations on your well-deserved retirement. After climbing the mountain, you can finally enjoy the view." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll just be brief. It's been, I said many years ago, I think it was 27 years ago that I came, I found a home here, and it's not, you know, such good people that we have, many of them are sitting here tonight, and a great team effort, and I'm really proud of the work that we all have done, not me, what we all have done over the years, and I've enjoyed it. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Continuing on, I just, again, real quick, just want to thank you guys, CNC Piping. Congratulate all of our valedictorians, salutatorians on their accomplishments, and all the graduates of all the high schools. Congratulations on your accomplishments, and congratulations to Ryan there on his achievements as well. Okay, at this time, we'll start out with Mr. Brandt.
Oh. All right, once again, I'd like to thank CNC Piping. Great work, great job. Also, Ryan.
He left, yeah.
He left?
Yeah.
Okay. Also, a special to all of valedictorians, salutatorians, how proud we can be. How much was that figure again, scholarships and all?
Five million.
Five million. Five million. That's remarkable. I'd be proud of all the students.
How many kids graduated?
Also, the Brookfield graduation attended and was wonderful. Ms. White and the staff did a wonderful, fantastic job. So I want to thank them. And also, Mikel Hunt, he participated in track this year, won his states in the 100-meter dash in the outdoor state championship, and he broke the school record for the 200-meter dash at the region. So congratulations to you. That's all I have right there.
I'd just like to congratulate all the 518 graduates. And I'd like to thank you for giving us that. I've never heard that figure before, as far as I know. And I'd like to thank Jeff, Lindsey, and Ron, everybody out to this graduation, went with no hitches. That was great, although we were small, but still. Also, Cody and Cody. I want to thank y'all for the projects y'all have done at the high school. I know y'all donated your time and your materials, and it's some things we couldn't have got done without y'all. And I hope that continues. And last, Dr. Johnson, I'd like to thank you. I'm going to be quick on this. Thank you for your leadership and your friendship. Thank you.
Dr. Miller.
Yeah, I don't have a lot to add. Obviously, congratulations to all our graduates. William Campbell Combined School graduation, it was a great ceremony. They have a very gifted singer that sang a beautiful Beatles song. It was just tears in her eyes. And the Laurel graduation, always a moving and great experience. So all of our graduates, especially our valedictorians and salutatorians, but congratulations to all of our graduates. I'm not great at math, but 518 graduates and 5 million, that's roughly 10,000 ahead, right? That's a lot. That's really impressive. And C and C really appreciate your leadership as area business people. And Mr. Hardy, thank you for your tireless work to, you know, promote and promote Campbell County and make these connections. It's a big deal to get that Region Five. It's a real big deal, and we continue to do it. So, and it's with people like you. So I hope you continue to be committed to the students and give them a leg up like that. Really appreciate that. I think that's all I got. So yeah. And Dr. Johnson, you know, your leadership has been very good for this county, for the school. You, you know, at the end of the day, during my tenure, no matter what the issues have been, kids came first. And your vision, your being two, three steps ahead, any concerns we've had or brought up, you were sort of already on top of them before they were even brought up. And I just really appreciate that. But at the end of the day, regardless of everything else, your team was committed to what's best for the kids. And it just showed. And so I appreciate your leadership and your friendship.
Thank you.
Mr. Jones.
Ladies and gentlemen, I've got a lot. I'm going to start off with, at the Leadership Awards, the H U T Pendleton Award is a very admirable award, kind of like second to none. Those of you that didn't know who Mr. Pendleton was, he was a principal at Rustburg High School for many years, and then on the Board of Supervisors. And his award means a lot. And our cohort and one of our dearest friends, Mr. Mike Lawhorn, he won it this year.
Right.
And I'm going to read to you what they read about him, because it's a lot of good stuff. And it says, "Each year, the faculty and staff of Rustburg High School selects an individual who demonstrates exceptional leadership within our community. The recipient of the H U T Pendleton Award of Leadership for the 22, 23 school years, Captain Mike Lawhorn. Mike is a graduate of Rustburg High School. He's been a resident of Campbell County his entire life, departing only four years to serve in the United States Air Force as a military policeman. He was hired by Campbell County Sheriff's Office in 1998. In August of that same year, he became one of the first two school resource officers in Campbell County. He served in the role of SRO for 19 years at Rustburg High School. During that time, he was promoted to Sergeant of the SRO Division in 2004 and to Lieutenant of the SRO Division in January of 2008. On January 1st of 2018, he was appointed to Captain of the Special Operations Division. As Captain, one of his main objectives was to ensure the safety and security of every student, faculty, and staff member by securing an SRO at each of Campbell County's 14 schools. Captain Lawhorn partnered with Superintendent Dr. Johnson to pursue this goal. Through tireless effort, this became reality in the summer of 2018. Aside from his considerable dedication to the SRO Division, Captain Lawhorn has also been a member of the Special Response Team since 1999. He served as an entry team member, team leader, and now serves as the team's commander. In spring of 2022, Captain Lawhorn demonstrated his continued leadership ability through completion of the FBI National Academy, a prestigious accomplishment requiring both mental and physical aptitude. He is the first and only Campbell County Sheriff's Office employee to achieve this incredible accomplishment. And it just says, "We're pleased to recognize Mike Lawhorn." And I think it actually got him by surprise that he won it. But, I mean, we got to face the fact that with his, with Dr. Johnson's vision and Mike's vision, we kind of set the stage for putting priority for security in our schools, and I think we've done well. So just wanted to share that with you guys, because it was a really nice award ceremony. And appreciate you all getting this picture up there, because he was smiling from ear to ear that night. And the rest of the stuff is all, it's all good. These meetings are just full of good. The Rustburg awards were just outstanding. $2 million worth of scholarships were given away. Just great stuff. And congratulations, not only to the valedictorians and salutatorians, but to all the graduates and every kid that moved up a grade. I mean, they've all accomplished a lot. And we certainly thank our teachers and aides and administrators and thank everybody that made that feasible and possible. We had a senior walk at Concord Elementary School, where the seniors from Rustburg High School came and marched down the halls, and the Concord kids were just, the eyes were like this big. And just, you know, you can't tell how that affects the kids, you know, when they see them. Let's see. Mr. Hardy, I would like for you to, the only thing I couldn't get to was the CTE signing day. Tell us about that, please, if you would.
So just real quickly, we have a number of students from our various high schools and students that take courses here at the technical center as well, that had dedicated themselves to going right into the workforce, Mr. Jones. So we had, I'm sorry, I don't have the number in my head right now, but approximately one student that we recognized for signing. We treat it a lot like a signing day for athletes, where so much of that attention is made out of athletes that sign to play at the next level, so to go and commit themselves to, in college or university, where they put their skills on display. And these youngsters, they have a different calling and a different path, and yet it's a very important one to our community and to our nation, and that is to go right to work. So many of them are going right into needed trades and other employment sectors, where we have a wide variety of students from heating and air to electrical companies, to automotive companies, to Sedexo, with, you know, hiring a student for their culinary program at Liberty University. So we had just a wide array of students that were taking their talents to the next level. And I think that we have to raise up all people, and it was a great opportunity to raise up those students that want to go right to work.
That's great. That's great. That's great stuff. I was privileged to go to both the Brookfield High School and the Rustburg High School graduations, and they were both extraordinary, just great jobs. Congratulations to the Rustburg High School softball team for making it to the state quarterfinals. I think they were not expecting to, but they started playing good at the end of the year and got to the state quarterfinals. Something I truly appreciate, you all may not, but the site updates from Dr. Johnson about the Rustburg Middle School project, the building, the new part, and now, you know, it's just really informative, and we really appreciate it. Cody and Cody, good to meet you, and thank you for what y'all do. Maybe we get y'all to come and weld these gutters up on the house where they don't blow when the wind blows. And a story, Ryan Hart, I mean, it doesn't get any better than that. Just great stuff, and whoever participated in making that happen, just great. Dr. Johnson, you know, just truly appreciate your leadership, what all you've done for the Campbell County Schools and your time here. Just great to be able to call you a friend. And Frank Rogers, I think I saw you sneak in back there somewhere. Just welcome you to our meeting. Glad to have you here. And that's all I got, Mr. Chairman.
My apologies, Frank. I didn't see you back there.
He snuck in. He snuck in.
He did. Welcome.
I got mine on.
Mr. Phillips.
Dr. Johnson, good riddance. All kidding aside, congratulations on your retirement. It's been a pleasure working with you. Outstanding job. Let's see, Rustburg Elementary School had an outstanding field day event, and this is the most important part, no injuries. I've been to many a field day, and there's always a skinned knee somewhere, but they had injury-free and the perfect weather for that. Ms. White did report they are, where's Ms. Hunley, fully staffed at R E S, so you do have some openings, but they're fully staffed there.
Our schools are fully staffed, yes, sir. But now, non-Rustburg.
Let's see, Yellow Branch, so no sooner does summer begin than summer school begins also, so there's no rest for the weary, right? So they did start their summary, summer recovery program. 76 students will be attending that, along with the extended school year for some special education children. Rustburg High School, Dr. Fields, outstanding job with the graduation ceremony and attended that. It was a great event. And you've also got 40 students registered for summer school as well, and lots of camps, getting kicked off basketball, girls' basketball and boys', volleyball camp later in June, and a freshman bridge program starting up 26th through the 30th, so 50 students registered for that. So the work continues, even though it's summer. Y'all aren't all taken off to the beach or anything, so you're continuing to do great work for the county, so thanks for that. Cody and Cody. Cody squared. Thank you guys for all you do. I happen to work at B W X T, which you're probably familiar with, but a lot of people think of welding and think of Billy Bob welding the guardrail on the side of the road, but it is a highly technical trade. We employ dozens of welders at B W X T, and I know we took part in your Weld Wars program. And thank you so much for the initiative that you've taken and for encouraging that pipeline of students to move into that field. It's crucial to our business at B W X T in making nuclear reactors for the United States Navy. It is a complex trade, and thank you guys for all you do in investing time and effort into growing that. So what else? Congratulations to all of our salutatorians, valedictorians, and graduates. Great to see them tonight. And Mr. Hart, congratulations to him and his efforts and his employ ship at, what was it, Campbell? So that's outstanding. So he got a job quicker than my daughter did. She just graduated University of Lynchburg. She's close, but not employed just yet. And I think that's all I had. So Anne, turn it over to you.
Saving the best for last. It's hard.
Oh, thank you. Is his nose growing now? So C and C, thank you also. And I'm just going to extend that, since everybody else has gone into detail on the thanks. I might send my son, who just graduated and has some welding experience and all that fun stuff, down to see you. But to everyone literally in the room, whether you're a civilian, or SROs, or John, you know, all of our, everybody here, the teachers, administration, you know, the board hired Bobby, Bobby hired everybody else, or, you know, if it went on down the line. And that is why we have such a high graduation rate and such a high GPA and a high, you know, postgraduate success is everybody here. So thank you to everybody. I went to the tech center graduation. It was packed, right? The graduation was packed, was awesome. I came back and attended the signing. And John, you just do such a great job. He has the teachers actually come up and sit here and do the signing with the employers, and the employers give them little goodie bags and stuff. I mean, the kids are just beyond ecstatic. If you haven't seen it, check out, you know, some of the photos that have been posted. It's a fabulous event. I also had a blast. I was invited to, and I attended both days, all day, of the Teachers Learning Academy at Rustburg High School. Our teachers teaching our teachers. They're, can I call it continuing education? Would that be a good way to say it? For their licensure and things like that. And it was so much fun. It was very informative. I learned a lot. And I just can't tell you the relationships and the people that I met there, and to see, what better way for me to see what the teachers are teaching in our schools, but our teachers teaching other teachers, how they conduct their classroom and give them suggestions on stress management, time management, all those wonderful things, trauma. It was fabulous. And I need to thank Bobby probably for that, too, and my thanks to Bobby, because that was something that Campbell County came up with, correct? Since 2015, I think somebody said.
Well, it's a tremendous amount of work. And I'll let Dr. Hale maybe give you the numbers, but I think we had over 400 participants.
It was packed.
The first day had over 300 of us scheduled, and that was just the first day and then the second day. So we had a whole team and a committee, and everybody pitched in, but it was a wonderful way for us to, in our school year prior to, you know, summer school starting, and the teachers really, truly enjoyed it.
No, I give credit to, quite a few years ago, we were having discussions about professional development and the calendar and getting it in, and there just wasn't a good way, you know, could we come up with a model for, or a better model? And that's what it came out of those sessions, and it's been very successful.
Yeah, it was great. Absolutely great. I also want to just remind everybody in the room, too, that if schools are closed, the libraries are still open. I love being on the Parks and Rec Advisory Council. Public libraries are still open. Except tonight, when I was going by Timbrough to bring the activity guides down. I got there at 5:59, the door was locked. They close at 6 o'clock, so I didn't have any activity guides to pass out. But the new activity guides are out also for the summer, and we're going to be expanding our distribution on that, because they do have a lot of great events. But yes, the public libraries are open this summer, and they have tons of programs for the students and for adults, too. So please check that out. And I do want to appreciate Bobby. I've only gotten to work with him for about a year and a half, and I'm sure he'll be glad to be rid of me. But I appreciate, he has never dodged a call. He's reached out to me probably more than I've reached out to him, and has always been just so great and gracious and understanding when I'm asking tough questions and, you know, and then, you know, referring me to the right people to get the answers and giving me advice on how to proceed, the best way to be successful in my, some of my crazy ideas that some of the lovely ladies out here in the audience are aware of. And I do, I appreciate everything. It was awesome. And I wish you a wonderful retirement, and I hope you hang around so we can bug you from time to time when we need some advice.
Thank you, Ms. Parker. Just one other thing I'd like to mention is, Ms. White, I, too, attended the Brookfield graduation, and I came home, I got home that night, I told my wife, one of the things I really enjoyed most about it is when the kids' names were called. First of all, we all got to shake their hands, but when their name was called, they had the opportunity to walk across the entire stage, have their picture taken, and proceed off the stage before the next person was called. And that was just so neat, to give them that attention for that time, so I thought that was great. So thank you. It was a great job. Yeah. You shook their hand.
Yeah, we all.
It was great.
We shook all their hands.
Enjoyed it. Okay, do we have any other business to discuss tonight? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. We have a motion by Mr. Brandt, a second by Mr. Jones. If there's no other business and no other discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.